Kind of stuff you'd expect to see in this sort of plan. Of those 47 recommendations, we were able to evaluate to some degree or another about 33. So it's not the whole picture. But unfortunately or sadly, the overall assessment we came up with was not particularly good. We evaluated things into four categories. Scored them from one to zero to four. Zero being nothing that was done. One being some minimal action, something was done. Two being some action was taken, more than minimal. Three, some significant action was taken. And then four, hey, the whole thing got done, was fully satisfied, and that would be great. Unfortunately, the average score across those seven areas was about .56 on this scale of four. Not very flattering. So what I want to ask, which suggests is that perhaps the DNR, who might take a look at this plan and do your own assessment. See, you know, do you agree with us? Have we missed something? Can you add something to what we've done? Can we help you? We can provide you the data that we have if you like it. We'd like to see, we'd like to see your look at our, you take a look at our data and then come back and say, hey, maybe we can work together to figure out what should be done, what hasn't been done, and what we can do to get a better lake, a better watershed, not lake water, to manage the water. Thank you.
Dan Brand and then Elizabeth White.
I am going to tell you your story again, so it's Devon. I'm Devon Brand, and I was asked to come here today and share my personal story of how the lake has impacted my life. And also to ask for further and better efforts at restoration that they be made. I've worked at the lake since I was 15 years old, mowing lawns and doing snow and leaf removal with my dad. And before that, he has worked there since he was a kid with his dad. When my dad first had me, he used a lot of the profits from the lake to raise me as a single parent. And then, when I got to be 15, I started working with him to save money for college. And in 2010, I got a scholarship to go to Up Now, but to make the move and to pay for the housing costs, I needed the money that I made from the lake. And if it weren't for the property values of the lake owners that we work for, I don't think I would have been able to afford the education that I ever seek. And I just want to let you all know that it has been very important to me, and I know there are others out there like me who work at the lake and who are putting other kids through college and making an effort to better themselves, and they're using the lake properties as a way to do that.
Elizabeth White, then Barbara Bealer.
I'm Elizabeth White. I have lived in Garrett County for all these 22 years. And I've actually been doing some work for the Friends of Deep Creek Lake. And we received a letter from Joanne Marche. She lives in Croft in Maryland. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it here tonight, but she did ask us to read this letter for her, so I'm going to read it. "To whom it may concern, I am indeed shocked and concerned to learn that Deep Creek Lake is not afforded the same significance as to warrant funding for responsible management of its health and maintenance as the bay. To be truthful, Deep Creek Lake shares the same level of importance revenue-wise and recreation-wise as the bay, but somehow remains a stepchild in the eyes of our governor and funding, none to be specific in the budget. This cannot continue to be tolerated, and this petition reflects the concern and desire of tax-paying citizens of Maryland to move, to move the state of Deep Creek Lake to the forefront of Governor O'Malley's agenda for 2013. I have been the owner of a vacation home in Deep Creek Lake for some years now, and I do not want to see my beautiful lake or investment there deteriorate because of neglect or lack of concern. I challenge Governor O'Malley and DNR Secretary Griffin to immediately set forth a plan to begin addressing the state of Deep Creek Lake, not only as a valuable resource of the state, but for its many citizens who live and work and pay taxes in the area. Sincerely, Joanne Marche."
Barbara Bealer, then Jane Avery.
Hi, my name is Barbara Bealer. What hasn't been talked about is the editorials that have been recently run in The Republican, and particularly the last editorial, which was an interview between the editor and the secretary of DNR, Mr. Griffin, in which, among other things, he stated clearly that there's no, there's no money for Deep Creek Lake from the public, from the state of Maryland, and that there is, some of the sections of the lake are so far gone that really can't be restored. We have three issues. Issue one is Maryland. It is a, the lake was bought by the state of Maryland. This was a conscious choice, and when they made that conscious choice in 2001, they undertook two things: to manage the lake and to be fiscal, provide the financial resources for that management. That the management principles were clearly stated in the Code of Maryland: protect the natural resource, ensure its ecological balance, and support its highest use as a recreational resource. These are great principles. We are not seeing the management going to do that, and now we're told there isn't any money. The second issue is management. This has been alluded to before. DNR, when purchased the lake, created Lake Management and the Policy Review Board to oversee management finances. The assumption was the county would be the third active partner, and they would all quote "coordinate their efforts." A long list of recommendations was made, developed. They're good recommendations. They've been ignored. The third issue is money. Secretary Griffin has stated there is no money for Deep Creek Lake. Let's go back to the buy-down process, which should have been a warning sign for us. We were really stupid to have let that go forward. Maryland sold off most of the existing buffer strip. This was our legacy from Pendelec, which has been essential to the health of the lake since it was built in 1925, and we sold most of it off. And what happened to the $13 million? Did it go to the lake? No, it went to the Maryland General Fund. So now we're being told there's no money for the lake. We should have had that $13 million, and it was, as we know, went at rock bottom price. So here we are. I have a code that has to be dredged. It's going to cost me, if I pay for it, a million dollars for my share of getting my part of it done. If anybody wants to buy a property for my property for an extra million dollars, just let me sell you that hunting Brooklyn Bridge.
Jane Avery, then Mike Aghard.
Mr. Secretary, you scheduled this meeting when most lake stakeholders are not here. You scheduled this meeting during a week when folks with jobs cannot attend. There are hundreds of people impacted, hundreds who would like to express their concerns. They cannot. Over 1,000 of them have signed our petition. So today, I represent not only my own voice, but the voices of numerous others who have emailed their feelings to Friends of Deep Creek Lake. Many of the responses were very similar, so to encapsulate them, imagine this whole half of the crowd dressed in 50s clothes with fancy dances, singing, "Save the lake, save 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 the lake." And then the solo guy comes in with a little hat on and these things, "Governor O'Malley, please, 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 save the lake. It used to be so pure, but now it's just a sewer messing up the Gulf of Mexico." "I want to strongly voice my support to save the lake," says one fella. "I've enjoyed it for over 50 years. It's a state treasure that deserves state support. It's a great treasure, and we can't afford to lose it. How many, how much of stimulus money?" "We are part of Maryland too. Act now before it's too late and cost five times as much to reclaim a living lake. We are aware of the Save the Bay Initiative, the importance of the natural environment conservation at the shore, and feel that it is very important for the government of the state of Maryland to support environmental remediation statewide, not just on the eastern shore area. Save the lake. We are part of Maryland too. I grew up sailing on Deep Creek Lake, and I'm dismayed how fast this invasive vegetation is taking over the lake. As a small business owner who builds flying Scott sailboats, I urge the state of Maryland to get involved in restoring the lake to the beautiful condition I remember. When we purchased our lake property in 1992, well, we were able to keep our boat in the water until Labor Day, but for the past five years, we've had to take our boats out sooner. The last two years, the boats had to come out by the middle of August. Unfortunately, I have to sell this lake property and haven't had any offers for the past two years because of the level of the lake in our cove on Green Glade. The cove is a wonderful location for children, but it is becoming unusable. Please save the lake for us and for the future."
"We here on Hagerland had to push the dock out 40 yards this year. Save the lake. It's western Maryland's treasure, every bit as important to us as the bay is to central Maryland and as Ocean City is to the eastern shore. The bay and the Ocean City have benefited greatly from your efforts. Our lake can be saved if you take action now."
My final comment is my own. And I'm simply going to state that for over 60 years, I've loved swimming in Deep Creek Lake. And now, I don't.
You've got to get this on YouTube. You'll go viral. Mr. Secretary, Commissioners, Mr. Newell. My name is Michael Ahern. I'm here to discuss the political ramifications of the lake situation. Good news is Friends of Deep Creek Lake released a newsletter just yesterday, I think, or very recently, that said there's cause for optimism, anticipating some of your remarks here today. And certainly, your work during the recent storm and the governor's and the rest of the county, state things, all that's, you know, appreciated. However, with respect to the rest of your remarks, they were filled with inconsistencies and barren of any sense of urgency or any source of funding to correct any of these problems you mentioned you're studying and studying and studying. All right. I've lived here for four years or so, and that time I observed a heartbreaking deterioration of the lake. And we all know what has been due to the low war, the bubbles, the high temperatures, the fish kills in the thousands, mill boils, and tangling swimmers and sailboats, erosion of the lakefront, sediment clogging the lake bottom. We all know that. Terrible problems are resolved, at the very least, of mismanagement. And at worst, gross negligence, I'd say, when you think of what this place was like, you know, since we started coming up 20 years ago. Let me turn the rest of my comments to you, Mr. Newell, in the hope that they'll be redirected to the governor. Over a year ago, Secretary Griffin, here on his special floor, came to the conclusion, and as much as said, that there are serious problems here with all of the above named situations. More recently, he observed that portions of the lake were likely unrecoverable. Now his position and policy, I guess, is that even after moving further down the road this terrible situation, there's no state money available for restoration due to the so-called recession, even though the GDP has been growing for at least the last few years and is expected to grow, you know, another point or two over the next couple. Recession's defined as a retraction of economy. That's not what's happened in the last couple of years. So don't blame everything, you know, on a recession, Mr. Secretary. And, and, and he suggested that the lake owners themselves fund the restoration. Okay, two, two seconds. And, you know, they will, the Maryland homeowners, okay, not, not the homeowners, okay? So I don't know where this comes from, that the homeowner should fund all the restoration. Last comment is, this all should be treated, not necessarily as a political situation, or certainly not an economic situation. This is a moral obligation we have to our children and our grandchildren to preserve our natural resource. That's not being done, it hasn't been done for the last four years since I've been here. And, you know, the sense of urgency is, is, has to happen, and the funding has to happen. Thanks.
Roush Smith, and Charles Hoffinett.
Secretary Griffin, and your staff, and our county commissioners, and everybody here today. I have voiced my opinion several times in letters to the editor and public forum, and I'd like to state right now, finally, The Republican newspaper and Friends of Deep Creek Lake have voiced a very strong advocacy for taking a stand that the state of Maryland must accept responsibility for the welfare preservation of Deep Creek Lake. Republican writing five editorials regarding the deterioration of the lake. Friends of Deep Creek Lake currently circulating a petition to the state to provide state funds toward reservation of the lake and surrounding watershed. It is my understanding that they have now over 1,000 signed petitions. I have voiced my own advocacy in letters over the years. It is my understanding that Ocean City receives Maryland state tax money of $500,000 a year to replace and replenish sand from erosion and to protect Ocean City. Due to, through the drought term. Why is not the state providing funds to protect Deep Creek Lake? Why are the lake access and lakefront property owners paying for the total cost of the DNR and the Lake Management Office and dock fees under Pendelec, that's $10 a year, and now in our association is $144? Why do lake access and front property owners have to pay for the total upkeep of the DNR buffer strip, including protecting the lake shore line from erosion? And controlling state and county road storm runoff that affects our own private property as well as the buffer strip? Where are the commissioners and the Maryland elected delegate and representative senator in lobbying for state funds to protect Deep Creek Lake, as is done with Ocean City? Now is the time for the commissioners to put forth funds to protect Deep Creek Lake and the watershed. Now is the time for Garrett County State delegate and senator to put forth appropriation bill in 2013 to get state funds to protect and preserve state-owned property. Deep Creek Lake, it is time for all of the flush taxes that be allocated toward a renovation of Deep Creek Lake and not the bay.
Charles Hoffinett, then Jess Whitmore.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Moffitt. I have a simple question, and it's in regard to dredging. A few years ago, at New Germany State Park, there was a proposal to dredge the lake there. Did that money come from the state?
Jess Whitmore, then Max Peterson.
Secretary, Commissioners, everybody else. My name is Jess Whitmore, and I'm a councilman for the town of Friendsville. And my comments aren't necessarily popular with this particular crowd, but we're on the other side of the mountain. We, we get the water from the lake that the dam releases, and we're a designated stakeholder in the lake, as designated by Maryland Department of Environment. We've been going to their stakeholder meetings for decades, and, you know, we're real happy with Maryland Department of Environment's involvement in lake water level. And that's, the town of Friendsville, of course, sympathizes with lake property owners when it comes to sediment and SADs, but I will tell you this, Secretary. When people want the lake to stay high, that takes away what Friendsville has come to develop around. We're developing our town around the dam releases. I believe we get pretty much 66 dam releases a year if the drought season doesn't come in. We have businesses that are created around it. They're becoming more and more dependent on those dam releases. 66 days of river opportunity are not much, but it's what we have. And we're a small municipality. I just wanted to come here today and throw my little piece of the mix into your consideration. I will make the observation aware to you that your Policy Review Board has got many different stakeholders on it, but nobody other than Maryland Fisheries that's on the other side of the mountain, nobody that's a stakeholder in the dam releases. And I think it's fair to you that you might consider having somebody, you know, help you with, you have a subcommittee called the Lake Water Level Subcommittee on the PRB, and I just wanted to, you know, let you know that we're aware of it and that they don't have the input that I think is fairly necessary for you to make considerations. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Max Peterson, then Alan Nixon.
Commissioner, and ladies and gentlemen, my name is Max Peterson. I'm a relative newcomer to the lake. Moved up here to live here full-time since 2005. When I bought my dock and boat, there was no noxious weed at the end of it. Six years later, I was surprised as all to note that noxious weed growing at the end of my dock, and I know it's because I boat, it's picked up on the propeller or whatever and brought. The point that I'd like to make is, I'd like to ask you to reexamine the weevil. The studies that I've done on the internet, and I realize not everything is true on the internet, seem to indicate it's a North American species. I did hear that it's considered invasive to Maryland, but I'd like to request that you folks reexamine that again. It seems like a relatively simple fix to the problem. You could do it now and move on. And finally, I support saving the bay. It's good. But there are a number of states other than Maryland that are stakeholders in that that should be brought into the pool: Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware, and New York. And this is tongue-in-cheek, of course. Let's build a dam where the Susquehanna is and let them deal with the problem up there. Seriously, we should find a way to include them in the tax base. Already has been mentioned, beach replenishment, some of that money ought to really come back to Deep Creek. We are all state taxpayers, and I appreciate your coming up here, and thank you for your attentions.
Alan Nixon, then Bill and Marie Alsop.
My questions have been addressed, and I appreciate you being able to attend this meeting again, the information. Thank you. You'll have time.
Thank you. Bill and Marie.
Thank you for coming.
Marie, mic'd in.
Oh.
There you go.
In 1946, my daddy built a cabin, and I'd been on the lake. I'm sorry, I get emotional. I'd been on the lake as a little girl. I would go back in the water, jump in the water, and it was beautiful. It was clear, it was crisp, and my brother and I'd stay in the water. They had our lips turned blue, my hands shriveled. I still love to come to the lake. I still love it, but I won't go in the water. It's horrible. It's full of weeds, invasive stuff in there, and I just get so emotional because this is my lake. Please help us. I'm sorry.
Mr. Secretary, Commissioners, I have one question that I would like to ask relative to the issues we've dealt with here today. We talk about water level, and now that Maryland's always owned the water, now that they've purchased the land, why is it we are not controlling our water level through these critical periods during the summer? If the MDE needs to take a look at the permit that they have struck with Bloomfield, it would seem to me, when it drops below the rule bands during the critical periods of the summer, July, August, and September, that we would put a plug in this. With all due respect to our folks down in Friendsville, we are the ones that are suffering when it goes below the rule band, and we slough it off to the fact that Bloomberg controls that. We need to step up, take care of this, and put a plug in this lake.
Howard Janoski, then David Shelling.
Mr. Secretary, Commissioners, my name's Howard Janoski. I have property of 79 Ten Point Road, better known as Pond Run Cove. Mr. Secretary, I think we have, we talk about dredging and Pond Run Cove. I think it's excavating. There is no water in Pond Run Cove. You need to clarify that in your study. You can ring them in. You can't, you can't, you don't need a boat. Any bulldozer will do it. Believe me. I can, I have pictures. I'm sorry to say, most of my doctor and most of the advertisements you see is what is wrong with Deep Creek Lake. I'm not here to criticize DNR. I'm here for some recommendations. Like the gentleman before me, I think we need to take a look at that study and the release of water that's leaving Deep Creek Lake. As the gentleman who worked for DNR said, we have changing climates, changing rainfall, and it seems like the temperatures are rising. I think we need to take a look at those charts once again and look at the flow levels, just like the gentleman before me stated, and make sure that in September, that we have enough water in the lake to float the boats in Pond Run. Number one, our Autumn Glory is one of our largest revenueing accounts. At the end of August and September, I had no water in my dock whatsoever. How can I rent a cabin or a lodge? How can I rent a cabin or a lodge on Deep Creek Lake with no water at the pier? The Commissioners realize this, they know it's a cash cow with the people coming up here. We need your help. I apologize that our representatives are not here, our delegate or our senator, I understand they needed to be in the napkins. But it's very important that we relook these things over. Also, when we do this dredging, you know, we're gonna have more water in the lake, more water in the lake's gonna be more turbines. We're looking at green energy. I think possibly with your people, you could go back to the federal government and say, we can produce more energy, okay, more electricity by dredging and getting more water to go through the turbine. I don't know if anyone's ever looked at that, but there should be some federal funds available. I thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you, sir.
David Schelling then Barbara Stork.
Secretary Kathy Griffin, Commissioner. My comments today basically involve bedload of water runoff coming, silting up the lake. I have two suggestions that would, I think, improve the confidence of this plan. I spent 30 years as a professor of Maryland, most of my time as a consultant to the state of Maryland, specifically for the state highway administration. Part of that was the policy on runoff since Atlas, 100-year storm, 20-year storm. And since that time, and my time up here, I've walked the lake, I'm having more difficulty today walking, but, and I've noticed that the runoff coefficients have changed. So my comments to the hydrologist here is, you have to be modeling what's happening along, around the lake, specifically the road system in Garrett County, which is under control of the county itself. The runoff coming off the roadway is, is receiving waters, is, I think, part of the problem with the silt filter. That's why it's so turgid down the line into the lake itself. It used to be clear, now it's muddy after every storm. And the type of material used rather than salt, I don't know what that plays, but I think that calcium has screwed up our lodge. The wood is not the same, everything is gray. I don't know what the answer is to that, but it's also the amount of material put on the roads. Circumfrontal roads around the lake are significant in the amount of runoff coming into the lake. And also, the small streams coming into the lake from the runoff is completely different than it was when we first moved up here in the 80s. It's not permeable in that it's going to the groundwater and aquifers, it's going around the lake. It's more, runoff coefficients are higher, and you can see that runoff go in. I'm pleased to see that you have gauging stations, but that's not the answer necessarily, because those are large software for TR-20, the large software runoff hydrology and hydrographs. I think you need a small watershed area, one by one, all around the lake, to look at exactly what's happening. There's one resource you might want to look into, Department of Civil Engineering has a resource called the Remote Sensing Center. And Dr. Reagan started that, it's been very successful. It's a satellite-based system. It does give you a lot of detail on a real-time basis, maybe one area. The last area I'd like to talk about is the speed of boats. The boats are getting faster and faster, and closer and closer to the docks, and there's more erosion along the shore. That to me means nothing but erosion and more bedload going into the coves when it participates out. So my comments are all technical, but I think they're important, in that the silting seems to be a real problem on this lake, and you have to take a high detailed analysis.
Barbara Stork then Ted Rissel.
Yes, my name's Barbara Stork, I'm a skipper's plate row, and I, a lot of the comments have been made here, we all know, of the erosion, the sediment, the grasses, the goose poop, we all know about all of those things. But I want to tell that, and I appreciate the Commissioners and the Secretary coming here, and know we have a problem now, but are they really gonna do anything about the problem? That's the question. We, you have wonderful neighbors that don't own the lake, but we go by all the rules you make for the lake. You have a wonderful neighbor in me, I have two enormous trees that are down in this storm, which many of you have. And DNR came and said I could take them out, which is good, because it'll impede my dock if I don't, but it's gonna cost me $2,000. So I don't know, I mean, we're helping you guys maintain this area, but we have no, we have to go by everything you mandate, has to be channels upon channels upon channels. We know, a lot of us want to do erosion laws, but, you know, you want permits of $1,500 even to look at our erosion laws, help. I mean, I, if I had a neighbor that would help me, I'd be sure calling upon him and treating him pretty nice. I mean, you know, we all know, we pay lots of taxes here, we help you there, we help in the bay. Are the people gonna help us when our lake's sore, like theirs is? You know, all of us have an investment here, every one of us here. You have an investment in your home, you have an investment in your memories, you have an investment in us here, as Commissioners, and your economic value. You've got to get on top of this stuff, we all know this. We're speaking, this little people here, we got a lot of people here for a Wednesday at 4 o'clock in November. I mean, get these people in this summer, this place, you couldn't even have a whole enough, they don't want to hold these people that have these concerns but can't be here. So we who are speaking today are speaking for much and many more. And lastly, I do appreciate you coming here, I think you're getting on top of it, but you're not getting it quick enough. We all know that this didn't happen overnight, I've written letters to Commissioners long before you guys, and as soon as they saw my name, they went in the trashcan. So, I mean, I've tried to tell people, the goose is gonna die. The poop will be here, but the goose with the golden egg is gonna die. So don't kill the goose. Get the goose healthy, that we can all continue on with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Rissel then.
Okay, there's not a whole lot new to say. I would say there was a little bit of good news. 10, 15 years ago, these gentlemen would not have been here. I'm not sure they knew where Deep Creek Lake was 10 or 15 years ago. So at least they're here, they're thinking about it. Part of the problem is, they're thinking about it and studying, they're not doing a whole lot. Someone mentioned about the lake management office. They don't manage the lake, they manage the buffer strip. We need somebody to manage the lake and the watershed. The erosion, you know, the erosion on the shoreline, this lady just mentioned it. We pay hundreds of dollars to get the DNR to say we can do something to save their land. And the tree, I've got a big tree down, I'm gonna have to pay the DNR 50 or 100 bucks so they can tell me I can chop it up and haul it away at my expense, their tree. I don't expect them to pay for it, but I think they ought to let me do it with not Friend of mine went up to Lake Chautauqua to take his lime scotch, took him half an hour to get through the weed, and that's a big lake. And there were machines out there chopping it up, of course, when you chop it up, you spread it. I'd like to second the thing about the milford weevils. And where do we get the money? Well, all of us here know that 2/3 of probably 80 or 90% of people in Garrett County drain to the west. So we ought to get that flush tax back here in Garrett County, and that would sure pay for a lot of work that needs to be done. Thank you very much.
My name is Judy Fang, I have spoken at last year's meeting. I wasn't sure what I wanted to say. But I really think that if the state of Maryland and the Maryland DNR cannot find a way to properly manage this lake and make the investment in it, and stop using it as a cash cow, they should find a way to turn it over to us and let us own it and manage it. One of the reasons that there are a lot of people that have second homes up here, who make meeting after meeting that they cannot attend, the reason they can afford a second home is either they successfully managed to build a business, or they've managed to be paid a lot of money to successfully manage somebody else's business. To sit in these meetings and be treated like the village idiot is beyond infuriating. To go to a local fundraiser and listen to everybody else referring to the DNR as the local Nazis, or they are referred to as the DNR Nazis, is disgusting. This lake has been so poorly managed, I have offered to take Bruce Michaels out on my boat when we discovered the horror of the Eurasian water milfoil, the same indictations have been made to all of you, the Commissioners have gone out, Don Sensel has gone out. The science that's being conducted is bad, plain bad, if you know anything about science or protocols, it's a joke. There has not been one of you that has been willing to go out and make an empirical eyeballing of the actual problems on the lake, looking at Eurasian water milfoil with divers who go out after the die-off of that particular grass. It is such a waste of money. We're tired of paying to keep your scientific staff studying the bay with our tax money and not paying anything in return. The time has come to either, as they say...
You know what.
But unfortunately, every time we do it, we go to support the bay and not ourselves. So, please.
That's it, Mr. Secretary, would you like to conclude the meeting?
When you do this, I learned you hold the mic like a piece, like a roll of toilet I, again, appreciate everyone coming. I think what we're gonna do, as best as we could with notes we took from people's testimony, is do a more thorough piece of commentary back to all of you, because in the little bit of time I have, it's gonna be very hard to respond to every issue that's been raised here, so we'll do that. We were talking to Commissioners earlier about this. The reason that we do this session in November, which I admit is when a lot of people are not at the lake, that wasn't by design, it's just that's when we finish up most of our yearly monitoring, so we come up here. But I think what we talked about earlier, and I think what we'll do, is perhaps come up and do updates, perhaps in July, when most people are here, have another meeting in an appropriate location. In this particular case, by next July, a lot of, some of the additional work will be completed, so we'll have more to share, and so perhaps we'll do, you know, a late fall meeting, and then one in July when most lake property owners and vacationers are here, so everybody can not only give us feedback, but also we can reach a larger audience. I guess I'd like to offer a few general comments. You've heard the phrase, and I'm sure everyone is entitled to their own opinion, but not their own facts. I understand, as I've gotten into this again, that there are some unique issues with people who own properties in the coves. And we are trying our best to work through those, whether it's lake grasses, whether it's sedimentation buildup, whether it's lake levels that particularly impact people in the coves. But to turn around and say that those issues are pervasive throughout the lake is a fact that simply is not true. Because most of the lake, with all due respect to those who think, we don't have good scientists, we don't do proper methodology, for example, we did the survey of bay grass, of lake grasses, including Eurasian milfoil in early July, so it wasn't after all the lake grasses had died off. All lakes change. This is not the same lake that it was, as many of you, many of you described it in glowing in emotional terms years and years ago. Everything in nature is constantly changing, including Deep Creek Lake. We are still relatively in a very good position in terms of the overall water quality of the lake. And you don't have to be a PhD to understand what's happened over time in the watershed. Look around you, look at the lake. To correct a few comments that were made about my discussion with the editor of your newspaper, The Republican, I did not say, and I just reread the editorial based on a conversation he had with me, that the department or the state or the governor was writing off areas of the lake. That's the sort of hyperbole that becomes tiresome, very tiresome. What I said was, in response to a question, we have a dedicated fund, the Waterway Improvement Fund. It's funded by the sales tax on boat sales in the state. Because of the recession, our revenues are down about 50%. That's just a fact. I mean, I'm not making it up, that's a fact. People who buy boats tend to purchase them, particularly the larger ones, by taking out second mortgages on their homes. You remember when the recession started back in 2008, I think, you remember, that lending dried up, second mortgages dried up substantially. They're starting to come back, but the boat industry in Maryland has not really bounced back significantly, so our revenues are way down. And those are the revenues that we use to do access to the lake, like launching ramps, to dredge, to do a number of things. And in rural areas of the state, I'm sure you all know this, but in a gross sense, because of the population base being less in large metropolitan areas, catch revenues that go to the state, in the case of Garrett County, exceed, excuse me, are less than what you get back in funding. That's not to say that you shouldn't advocate for more, that's your right as a citizen, of the state to advocate for what you feel you need.
Say that again.
Any area of the state that's less popular, like your county, always gets more back in expenditures than you generate in revenues.
But do they go to the lake?
No, they don't go to the lake, they go to the general fund, with exceptions of certain tax and P revenues that come to our department.
What about a credit for all our buy-down funds that went to the revenue?
Yeah, that 13 million, where'd it go?
Again, I'm just giving you some comments, but I'm not...
You get a lot from us, too.
That's, you aren't very good stewards of that 13 million that went down here.
Let me continue, I'm not gonna debate this issue with anything else. References have been made to, we won't direct the coves. Now, those people who own property in the coves, I assume, realize when they purchase those lots, which were perhaps, I don't know, less in value than homes on other parts of the lake because they were in coves...
No.
They were waterfront lakes.
No.
Are concerned about all of this. Let me tell you, with the Waterway Improvement Fund, for all the dredging we do, as a general rule, if you think about this in terms of the expenditure of public dollars to benefit the voting public, we dredge and we pay for major voting channels... major voting channels when we have the funding, which we don't have now. We pay for 100% for major voting channels that are used by the general voting public. We do not do that for spurs and coves throughout the bay and all its tributaries. When we have revenue, what we do do is provide greatly subsidized loans to local governments who then enlist the support of people who own property along spurs or coves to pay off the cost of dredging. That's been the policy of the state for years, because once you go beyond that and start deciding which group of property owners who are not part of a, who don't live on a general voting channel or benefit from it, then you, then, number one, you have far more need than you can ever, ever possibly accommodate, and then you get into questions, well, why are you benefiting this group of property owners versus this group over there, particularly when you can't benefit at the moment?
You benefit a year late.
Pardon me?
You benefit a year late.
Yes, they don't.
Right. We also own, stayed on the waters under the Chesapeake Bay and all its tributaries. Several people, again, mentioned Ocean City. We don't put a half a million a year into a maintenance, going to periodic replenishment, we put a million a year, but that's matched by another million by the city of Ocean City and Waukegan, the county within which it's located, so that's basically a 50-50 match, federal government puts their share in. We are trying our best to work through these issues. I think we have had much improved conversations and cooperation with this board of county commissioners, I want to give them credit for that, and more things are going to start to happen as we move forward. I would only urge all of you to think about the following: As long as people up here are divided stakeholders, we will, we will not achieve any of the goals that we need to hammer out. As long as all of you are divided, heading people in Friendville against lakefront property owners versus fishermen and all that...
There's no division, there's no division. Whether we want the lake to survive.
I didn't, I'm not talking about that, this, I was up here last year and there was a lot of, there was a lot of debate among various beneficiaries of the release of water from the lake, not as much this year. All I'm trying to say is, and it's up to all of you, but in my considerable experience in government, if you want to get things done, if you want to move the ball down the field, if you want to get, you need to have consensus, and you need to tone down the rhetoric and start working constructively with one another and with government, both here and at the county level, to see what we can develop.
Vice versa.
Pardon me?
And vice versa. You need to up your rhetoric, down your studies, and work the bus.
That's a very...
We, as someone suggested, we can stop, believe me. We've been cutting our budgets every year, cutting, not adding to them. If you don't want us to do this comprehensive monitoring program, which we thought was a good idea when I came back to this department, just tell us and we will stop doing it. If you don't want us to do any of this work, we'll stop doing it. If you want us to turn the lake back to the county, or as someone suggested, to the property owners...
It's not right.
What do you mean, it's not right? That's what you were saying.
We're saying action is better, we're not saying studies are bad, we're saying a sense of urgency and some real action on the, solving the problem.
Sir, sir, sir. State government, local government, and this state, revenues are way down. They're way down. Pardon me?
We're spending all the money.
Pardon me?
Where's all the money going at you? I mean, you can set sense of priority.
We have...
Who's priority?
Sense of the...
It's not revenue, it's not money.
I'm starting to argue with you, and I apologize, I don't mean to do that.
All right, you do.
The only thing I'm trying to say is, we're trying our best to work with your local government, with your delegation in Annapolis, and listening to all of you to try to develop a consensus, because if we have a consensus over where we want to go with the lake, it's much more likely that funding will happen. As long as we are in the midst of a lot of these debates, I'm not saying helping debate isn't good, but as long as we continue in this fashion, we're not, we're not going to get to a point where securing funding...
Well, let's just make a commitment to move forward, that's all we're asking.
A move forward.
I think I will state it recently, saying it not too long ago.
Well, anyway, I'm getting, I'm voicing my frustration, you have it, we're not taught of plants in government, we also have frustration. We're doing our best, obviously, you don't think, many of you don't think we're doing enough, that's fair, that's your right as a citizen to say that and press for more action, I understand that. But I'm just urging all of you to try to come together with us and with the county government and see what we can do together, because there is a lot of competition for funding, it's not a period of great excess revenues to state government or local government. So the more we coalesce, the better chance we have together securing funding at both levels, at all levels of government to help move the lake forward.
John, are you going to commit to a mechanism that would bring all of us together? We've been trying to do this for years, we would love to come together with you and talk about this, and the county commissioners would be a major breakthrough. It has been very difficult to get the DNRs here, and with all due respect, the county commissioners here, with your leadership, you can put in place a watershed management mechanism which would recruit all of us stakeholders to identify a consensus area, not unanimity, we will never reach unanimity given all the divergent interests. We have a consensus, it's a red herring to suggest that the, that the lack of complete unanimity is the problem here, it's the lack of a management mechanism.
I don't think I used the word unanimity, but I said, "General..." You're never going to get 100% of anything.
I'd just like to say, say one thing, Mike Lewis, I'm principal at the Department of General Services, and we've had, we've had a wonderful partnership with the DNR, we've gone from raising 350 fish for stalking initiatives to now with 10,000 fish in cooperation with the DNR to populate the lake, our local streams, the Savage River, every community fishing, rodeo for our kids, or fish we've brought. So, I mean, it's out there, but it's not easy, I mean, and you've got to be able to, you know, we can sit here and say one thing, but the action's in Annapolis, you know? You've got to get out and develop those kind of partnerships, then be able to work. We've just had tremendous experience, and it just continues to grow. I think the lake, I've been on the lake all my life, we've been there, but it is changing, there are things that we can do as we come together, but, I, but we have a great partner, a great model to follow. I admire your courage for coming out, because you had to know you're going to get 22.
I don't, I don't, that's part of my job, I don't think it's part of the job of people who work with us.
Everyone in this room wants one thing, they want the lake to be good.
Right, and all I'm trying to say to you is, there's some localized issues, particularly in the coves.
And we're all trying to work together. Some of us talk out of frustration because we've been trying for so long. I don't even go to property owner meetings anymore, I'm surprised I came tonight, because it's like, what are you talking for?
Right, let me just sum up. A, we'll do a follow-up commenting on a number of things I didn't comment on, and we'll send it to the commissioners, and send it to the PRB and the Properties Association and others, and we'll let it, you know, have it posted on our website, so you can look at, look at our response to some of the specific issues. Secondly, we'll plan on coming up here twice a year, and we'll come up next July, and we'll repeat that when most of the folks are up here recreating in the summer for the reasons I stated. And thirdly, we're going to continue to have discussions with the commissioners about how we move to a broader lake management plan that does involve stakeholders and other related issues. So I think by, things are just going to start to unfold at a little more rapid pace. All I'm, all I'm trying to say to you on funding is that we're still trying to dig out of the hole at the state level, there's light at the end of the tunnel. We have expended more waterway improvement funds up here, some of you know this, perhaps some of you don't, than the revenue that we've gotten that goes into the fund, as I was mentioning earlier. I'm not saying it's enough, but the proportion of what we spend, send back here for projects is greater than what we get from Garrett County. And that's going to be true generally speaking. So, that's enough, I'm sorry if I got a little frustrated, but we're people, we're people too.
Thank you, Blue. The commissioners will be here, Secretary Griffin, I know I said leave, but the commissioners will be here if you have comments for us.
I suppose, because not one is watching the other. I've been in touch with people, they don't want to hear me. It's just the frustration, I couldn't want, I don't know, I don't know.
Hi.
Yeah, she's on my show.
I know, I know, you should have, you should have.